Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
No changes to the agenda, Madam President.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
It's okay.
We have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I was hoping he was coming in the door, sorry.
I'm not holding. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Just make sure we can. Okay. We'll move on down to, do we have any patient reports? For anyone in the room? Any more reports from this one?
Just watching construction at our high school and high school. It's going to be coming along on the ropes quite nicely. The window project is disappointing the same ways. And it's delayed like it is. It's nice to see activity though. Nice to see things get fixed.
Okay, that'll take us to your first report, Mr. Jacobs.
Okay, Adams Brown's going to be in the district on Thursday, August 21st, which is also the first day of school. They're conducting annual fiscal audit. Brian's already given them a lot of the information that we need. Again, most of the work is done in advance, but they do come into the district on one day and they finish up. And they usually have a visit with me and Brian to talk about some things. I'm guessing they'll come to present probably in October, what they traditionally do, so we'll kind of plan on that. All staff back-to-school picnic's going to be Wednesday, August 20th, six o'clock in the High School Commons area. That's kind of our traditional kickoff event. If you guys are available to attend, please come. Bring your families as well. All school board members are invited to attend. Foundation's also invited to attend, as they traditionally sponsor that event. I'm going to continue to give you updates on this. This should not come as a surprise, but enrollment, at least preliminary numbers, are down rather significantly, which again, should not come as a surprise. I've been working with Karen a little bit on this, and what I'm really looking for is expected returns versus what actually is returning. Because we know the incoming kindergarten is going to be less than the outgoing seniors. We know that. Now, really, what it is, is the ones that we anticipated coming back, how many of those actually come back? And then also, we could get some new ones as well. That's the, would be the area that is unanticipated, because when we make those assumptions, we assume that everyone who is here will roll over, and then we basically make the changes based off of incoming kindergarten, outgoing senior, and then incoming age grade from St. Joe's. So, again, just to kind of give you an update, enrollment is down, which shouldn't be a surprise. And then also, the actual count date this year's September 19th. It's traditional September 20th, 20th on the Saturdays and the 19th. And that's the official date. I'll give you updates as we get closer. I am planning on making a recommendation to purchase a new special education bus, which we've talked about in the past. We kind of maneuvered our schedule for vehicle rotation to include that this coming year. Just to give you an idea, it's 15 years old, right at 15 years old. Last time we purchased one in 2012, and it was approximately $53,000. I've just looked at some rough estimates, and we're planning on about $100,000. So, in the course of 15 years, the cost of a special education bus has essentially gone. So, that should give you an idea of kind of the budget issue we're facing as well, in terms of increased cost. And that's, you know, one example of that. This will probably be later in the year. I'm going to get done with some bond issue stuff first, and then I'll probably come to the board to recommend the purchase of the bus. That is something we have to edit out, and I'll try to bring some bits to you, and then we can decide what you want to do with that. I do know that we are spending a lot of time repairing it, a lot of resources repairing it, and on the rotation, it was scheduled for 15 years, and essentially, we've got that useful life out of it. As you guys probably heard, our federal title monies, and this is across the country, were actually withheld for a while. They were, you know, basically impounded, and then they were recently released. That amounted to about $31,000 for us. So, it wasn't insignificant, and it also wasn't something that, you know, Greg is putting in initially. We did budget for it, but we now actually officially have our allocation, and with the budget that I'm going to present does accommodate that, so we will be able to spend those monies. But that was kind of a pretty harrowing experience for larger districts, that kind of got money to run operations, and the fact that they got released relatively quickly meant, I think, the consternation was short-lived. In our district, like I said, any loss of money is significant, but I have a plan in mind to address the $31,000 deficit, in addition to the deficit we already have, if we weren't going to get those monies or if they weren't released. But rest assured, we now have a full federal allocation coming to us, and we'll be able to spend it. I do want to take this time to thank all of our summer staff. Everyone in the central office, Brian, Ashley, and all the directors and administrators, Mike, Sherry, Nora, Ryan, Joel, Ally, Parker, and their respective staffs for all that they did this summer. This is obviously a busy time for us, and we try to get everything ready for the new year. That's a lot of work that's done behind the scenes, not in a very public manner. Have had to work for some construction a little bit, and also just through some imposed, lessened budget accommodations. I've worked with our directors, and we've got another meeting coming up to talk about this year, and how we're going to handle some things. But with some limitations placed upon them, they've done a wonderful job of making sure the public's ready to go from the beginning of the year. Really appreciate all their efforts at the end of each summer. I do try to thank them, because they do work very hard at making sure we have a positive learning environment for kids. Preview of coming attractions, first day of staff and fall activities is already a week from today, next Monday, so we'll have fall activities begin, and then that's the first day back for staff. First day of school is the following Thursday, August 21st. Yeah, and we're ready to go 25, 26 school years upon us. I did have a couple of items I added here I wanted to mention to you. The library board has discussed what we've talked about as far as the school district carrying a disproportionate burden of the library expenses, and I've been spending a lot of time visiting with our director, Sherry Holmes. I think that body, well, that body did send a letter, and I think their intent is to meet with a member of the school board, a member of the city council, some members of the library board, and all relevant personnel to talk about, maybe a five-year transition to where we go away from this. I was going to present this at some point, because it is something that we can continue. This agreement was originally made in 1968, and it may have worked, and it doesn't necessarily work now. I think some concepts need to be reimagined. And what I wanted to know is if someone would be willing to volunteer for that. Now, they did have a recommendation, the board did, and I don't mean to speak for Sherry here, but the library board recommended John, if you would be willing to serve on that, because you do use the library quite a bit, and they felt like someone with maybe some intimate knowledge of its use would be beneficial for that. They've got a list of people that, and again, it's you guys get to decide who actually represents you, but they thought that I should ask you to see if you would be interested if it would please this body. And then, we don't know what will come from those discussions. I would hope that maybe we have like a, what I would call a five-year linear transition to where maybe over the course of three to five years, we have something in place to where five years from now, it's a totally different funding model. Thoughts on either that, or I guess on one of your colleagues serving in that role? Does anyone have a problem with John serving in that role, or is anyone else just dying to do that?
Please, the board, I will.
And I guess John, if you even want to.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
I have no problem. I'm, I'm, I like the idea of having those conversations. I think that's a good move.
And I will say, I first mentioned our circumstance to Sherry, not maybe realizing she was going to take it back and really get the ball rolling, and, because I was going to meet at some point, I want to not be doing this in stages here, but I appreciate the fact that she kind of got them to understand what the situation is, and I get visiting with her. They didn't, I don't think anyone fully understands the funding mechanism, and how it's funded, and where it all comes from. And I think now, in light of some of our budget circumstance, and the fact that the agreement is, you know, what, 60 years old, almost 60 years old, I think the time has come to where we need to revisit that. So, we'll move forward with that, and I'll keep you guys posted. I don't know if this is the time for you to ask your question, I'll maybe answer it. I did get a question from a board member about how the, with the bond issue carrying over to the school year, how are we going to handle student and contractor interactions? And we had a meeting today, a progress meeting, and ultimately, there was going, there is to be no contact between any of the contractors and staff or students. Obviously, there will be incidental contact, someone walking by, if it's not bad for something, but there is to be no communication, there is to be no physical contact. If staff have questions, they're not to direct them to an individual worker, maybe working near their room, in the hallway. They're supposed to go to their building principal, they will address that question. I do have a question out with the architect about the, you know, potential people that are on lists, so that we can, you know, get that score underway to make sure we all have a common understanding of what the expectation is. Again, if you remember correctly, this was, a lot of this was supposed to be done in the summer, so we weren't supposed to have this during the school year, but we are going to try to address that, so both, for both family students and the contractors understand what is expected while they're on school property as they're doing work. Let's see here. I wanted to give you some band numbers here, I know that was the issue du jour last year. As of now, we tentatively have 19 high school students and 20 middle school students in band, which isn't great, but it's better than it was, and I think that maybe gives us a foothold in the going forward, and I think hopefully that will encourage more people to do it. We're still working on schedules, so that remains to be seen, if all those kids will be able to do that after the schedule changes are made, but I'm confident that it's going to stay relatively close to that. But I did want you to know kind of where we're at with that, because we did go through a lot of, a lot of emotional moments, or so to speak, and hopefully that gives some data to ponder.
How many was the middle school number?
28, 28 middle school, 19 high school.
Right now, we're at 28 and 18.
Okay, 28 and 18. I guess if the schedule issue probably goes in, yeah. We do need to appoint a new member to the foundation board from this body. Don was the member who was the one that attended meetings, and he obviously can't overdo that, because he's retired in his position. Their meetings are the first Wednesday every month. I would say they meet out of the 12, 12 Wednesdays, did I say Monday? Wednesday, first Wednesday every month. Out of the 12, they meet probably 10 of them. I don't know if anyone would be willing to serve in that role, it's at 6 o'clock, I'm sorry, 5:30, 5:30. Thoughts? We don't have to have necessarily a answer now, but, you know, maybe the new person who comes on, if you guys point someone, maybe you wouldn't fulfill that role.
Can we give it to Jason, since he's...
I heard Jason say that he would love...
He heard it somewhere. This is going down.
Talk to Jason. I'm not able to, Wednesday nights are out.
Congrats, Jason.
I have this feeling that SDAC, Wednesdays.
I will say, do you want me to ask him? I mean, I can ask him, see, and if he's willing to do it.
I mean, honestly, if he has any interest, that would be great.
Okay. I will ask him, with your permission, if he does say yes, then we can work with that understanding, and if not, we can come back and try to figure it out. Also too, and I don't have information on this, but I'm going to bring something back in September, we do need to make a decision on whether or not we want to continue streaming meetings. I know there's been a lot of consternation around the state, and a lot of districts are doing different things. I think KSDE and KSB, through Watermouth, maybe are recommending different things, but ultimately, the main thing is if you broadcast any part of your meeting, you have to broadcast all the meeting. I think there were some people that were not broadcasting parts of, like, patrons' comments, which is not something we've done, but I think for whatever reason, some districts were just shutting it off when patrons were coming up, so if you were attending at home and watching the streaming version, you would pick up on that. To the best of my knowledge, I don't believe you have to give someone who is watching the stream an opportunity to speak, which was a concern, so I don't think that is going to be an issue. I'm going to find my some of this, to, you know, give you a list of things that you can consider, but I don't think that's one of them. I think there is some concern, just in light of the political environment we're in, that if you do stream them and you actually archive them, where it's really accessible to the public, that that is a public record, and they can go back and invoke that, to say, hey, you guys said this or something, and I think some districts are going to be a little fearful of that. We haven't had much issue with this since we started this, and I know there were different opinions when we started it. I have not had, at least to my knowledge, haven't had any real issue with us broadcasting, but maybe there are some things that have gone behind the scenes because we actually broadcast and archive. Nothing's been brought to my attention. This is something that you guys will need to decide. And then also too, we do need to get some, I do need to get some information about committee work, to what extent we have to document that and notice the public on committee work, for example. I take the negotiating team over to Lyons. There's, I know if there's only one person who needs to do it, but if there's a majority of the group, and if there's three, a majority would be two, if there's two, a majority would be two, we would, we have to like notice the public that two of our board members are going over to Lyons, and I've got to document this. I don't know, I've got to do some more homework on that. But I will maybe bring you a list of considerations and legal perspectives, so that you guys can make a decision on that, and then we'll move forward from there. And that's all I have for my report. Any questions? I am going to talk about bond issue here a little bit, that's the subject of the agenda.
Well, on the communicating with contractors, you say no staff will, but I mean, essentially is the principal there contacted, they need to...
That's correct, yeah. We really don't want a lot of engagement with the actual workers. And again, too, I mean, there's some reasons, like, you know, you know, hey, could you guys, you know, knock that noise off, or something, or whatever, you know, I'm not talking about that, or if, you know, hey, kids, watch out, you know, don't hit, you know, Johnny up there, you know, hi Johnny, as they walk by, not really talking about that. We're talking about consistent engagement, we're talking about, we've got a contractor that has a job to do, we have students that are there to learn, we have staff that if they have questions, really need to go through a formal channel, so we don't have confusion. And the main thing is so parents know kind of what the protocol is, and I'm guessing from the board members' perspective, that was kind of the main thing, is if a parent sends a child there with these strangers there, how do they handle it, particularly with younger ages, and what's our protocol? And then obviously, if we do have some people that are, you know, on a particular list, how would you...
Yeah, particularly on the list, I mean, I think our principals would want to talk to their superintendent or the inspector, and I don't think they really want to talk to anybody else. No, we're on their side of the story, you don't want...
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
We had a good conversation today. I told them, I said, I can't guarantee you kids aren't going to ask you questions as they go by. They're kids, they're, you know, intrigued, I said, but we'll have a chat with them, I'll talk with my staff about the protocols, we'll take care of all that next week before school starts.
And the architect is doing some work behind the scenes for us, is going to back with us, you know, some of that, but we did, I did express that question at the meeting, and I think we've got some things figured out, so we're going to establish protocol. Any other questions? Okay, that's all I have.
Hold on, down. Thank you. Move to administrative reports, it looks like Mr. Kansas is going to go first.
I drew the script today, so, actually, mine was keeping first, so, that's okay. My shout-out always goes this time of year to our Jump Start program. I think it's vital for our kids. We've got some good staff members, Terry Ricker, Mackenzie Hall, Judy Fulbright, Lynn Carew, and Anthony Foose. It's just a good way to get those kids back in. I said, sometimes it's just good for the teachers to kind of get them back into the gear of teaching. But we had 31 kids participate this year, which is a group. They end tomorrow, I believe they go into the pool for a little bit, and then they're going to come back and do some activities at the school. So, been well-attended, I think our attendance has been pretty good, you know, of course some kids miss here and there, but it's just a good program. It's good for those kids, it's good for me, helps me energize me a little bit going into school years, so thankful for each one of those. Like Mr. Jacob says, our custodian and maintenance staff, they just do an awesome job. Delilah and Russell in my building, they weren't working around construction, not cleaning, window cleaning, who to remove, so, and they painted our bathrooms, you get a chance, all the bathrooms in our building, in the older part, not the new part by the band, have been all been painted, look great. Got new lights in the library, Sherry's going to have to bring some sunglasses down there now, because we didn't realize how dark it was, and then Russell repaired the roof of the ceiling in there, after they got the roof repaired. No leaks last night, so, no leaks, no buckets, no leaks, no nothing. I said, well, that's a heck of a way to find out. Let's drop three inches of rain on it and see how it goes, so thrilled to death. I know it's not on here, but Paul and Ryan have been doing upgrades and stuff. We did add some, we're going to add some cameras over there, we got one on the back on the northwest corner, that was kind of a blind area for us, now that's all covered. We're going to get another one out on the front playground, got a blind area there as well. Always you find, kids have a way to find the blind areas, if I don't even try it, they just find them, and then we're going to have, I think, one more in the hallway somewhere, so. We are ordering AEDs, one more for each building, put by the office. All our AEDs are like down by the gyms and everything, we relocated one in our grade school to more prominent area, and at a proper level, we had one that was like up here, that was like pretty high, so, but we are going to put one outside each office, and I think that's, that's going to be pretty good because of our new SERP certification, so. Like you said, the window project, it is what it is. It's not great. If you like the smell of plywood, come on in, there's quite a bit of it in there. But as always, at EGS, we're going to make it work. We're going to figure it out, and we're going to make it work, and we're going to educate kids come the 21st, and what other way to do it? Admin team, we're going to SDAC on Wednesday for a KISA meeting, a little update there. We'll have our first BLT meeting on Monday, the 18th, that afternoon. Once again, I love my BLT, we've got good people, making good decisions. We have great discussions, that's what I love, they're just good discussions, and we drive, we drive change that way. We are going to have open house, I've been telling Mr. Jacobs, do we have it, do we not, the construction, do we bring people in, you know what, I'm to the point, bring them in. We might just celebrate it and hang some caution tape and get some yellow heart hats and make the best out of it, so.
Scare people.
Well, we're going to try, I would say, do we want to bring it down, do we, you know, but it is what it is, it's what we got, and we'll probably bring people in, get people, get them excited, so. And our teachers have been in, I think I've seen every teacher so far, and school doesn't start, they don't have to be up here, so, I've got an amazing staff, looking forward to working with them this year. And Mr. Jacob said, our enrollment down, the way I looked at it, we graduated 36 sixth graders, and we bring in 20 kindergartens, so it's about right where we're at. So, that's about where we're at, about 16, 17 kids. That's all I got. Questions?
The Jump Stars, that similar numbers to what we've had?
Yeah, yeah, about average, so we try to keep between 12, 28, 32, somewhere in there. So, you get too many, and then it's, it gets a little crazy, but they're doing some great activities with them. Lot of energy though, that's what I love about the elementary school, just those kids, a lot of energy, and if you feel down, they'll bring you right back, because if not, you're in trouble. But that's about all.
How do you determine who is a part of that?
They go through, and they look like below grade level, or reading scores and stuff like that, kids that struggle to get back into the learning mode, and we want the kids that are going to be involved, you know, the ones that the parents will make sure they get there. Is it a perfect system? No, no, but I think we do a pretty good job of bringing in the kids that need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to echo kind of what he said this time of year, building manager, Mr. Baker, our custodian Zach, Jerry, they've all been here, very busy. We had the baby detector going off because we were dusting and buffing floors, and so they're working very diligently. We have new paint on all of our walls, they fixed up, I think we've matched six different shades of paint that have been around for 60 to 100 years, so we've updated a lot, and it looks nice, that you can see the fresh white paint as you go down my office. Got some paint as well, and they no longer call it the white room, in the ISS room, or study area, so hopefully that'll be some good talking point. I'd like to say a big thank you to my office staff, I have a lot of people that are in there, and teachers that have stopped by before contract, before anything, without setting a meeting, they have come to me to give ideas. I'll admit, I was tired after that first year, and it was kind of hard to get back into the mode, and I had two teachers come in my first Monday back, brought me some new ideas, and they have given me new lifeblood, they have got me really excited with some new ideas they brought, all my own good spreadsheets that I just love. So, big thank you to them for kind of getting us motivated and sort of in the right direction. This summer, I do have Mr. Kern and a group of sponsors took Skills USA, I had mentioned they were going to go to Atlanta, Georgia, they had done some fundraising. Banks Jacobs took 24th in the nation in prepared speeches. Joe's Kern took 16th for Penn Design and got a certificate of recognition. And then they also spent time, they had a Courtesy Corps, they had some that were down there helping, and they helped also build bikes for a local organization, charity, and were able to donate that while they were there. Tomorrow night, I know Mr. Abbott is going to be working with Stuko, they'll be on the front lawn, the south lawn, on Second Street at 7:30 for treats, yearbook, pickup, and just some fun stuff. They have, he's been very flexible with us, with the parking lot being available, so we appreciate their flexibility on making that work. Thursday of next week, we've got our Fall Sports Parent Meeting at 6:30 in the Commons area, so find out about our Fall Sports. Teachers are getting ready, they're finding out today and tomorrow about our back-to-school night, what that's going to look like. Middle school will be from 6 to 7, we do an overlap, so from 6 to 7 will be middle school, and that's 6:30 to 7 o'clock time, it gives them time to walk their schedule, see their teachers, and then bring in the high schoolers to talk to me in the Commons area. That way, there's a little bit of overlap, especially for those families that have middle and high school students, so they're not coming at different days, I have them come at a lot of different times. And I think last year, we had almost every core middle school teacher here, they had something for them to present, they were at their classrooms, ready to meet up. We're trying something new this year, on the 19th, which is Tuesday next week, Mrs. Holmes has agreed, NHS, from 1 to 3, we're working on having new students to the district come in, and they would give them a tour around the building, have somebody kind of be a mentor, just somebody that they could look to for guidance, and some leadership, just a friendly face that they can give them some time around the building, ask questions, and get to know a couple people. So, if we have, you know, for an exchange student, we have, we're a little higher on enrollment than what we've lost so far, it's pretty even so far in our building, but we've got a couple more newbies in than we've lost so far, so hopefully we keep that trend, but we're looking at seven to eight right now, new students, so that they would be able to come in and walk around with them and acclimate. Mrs. Coleman, Mrs. O'Neil, or Mr. O'Neil, Mrs. Fisher and myself, we've been working with the Jostens Renaissance Program, that was the SEO curriculum that we had talked about. We have come up with some new connections, this is what Mr. O'Neil and Mrs. Fisher came in with, and got me really excited with. Some new incentives we're working on to excite kids, and with academics, getting connected with the community. We haven't announced all of it yet, but we are working to align it with the Jostens Renaissance, but also some challenges that they would be able to do each month, and each equal group would have a chance to participate, and would encourage them to have some ownership within their group and within the community. Teachers and students would get recognition for their participation, it's, so I gave a couple examples on here, food drives, activity attendance, grade increases, we call it on a roll versus on a roll, so we're recognizing that increase rather than just the highest grades, and, so that's just some of the examples. There's gratitude challenges in November, different things, so we're trying to find some things to connect the community and get kids and teachers excited.
I'm busy. I have one question. Okay. Following up to last spring, I know we discussed needed changes to enforcing the policies on cell phones. Are we going to start off the new year and have a new emphasis on all the teachers following playing by the same rules?
Yep. That'll be something that we have spot checks for. I have things that are in my desk that I will be doing classroom checks and kids can be recognized. Teachers can be recognized for it as well, for falling through. And it could be in class any day, anytime when we stop through. And it'll be something that we discuss during our back to school. Hearing, I think keeping great men, maybe adopting the pouches as well. So having some bigger schools in the district potentially adopting it as well. That way we have a little bit more buy-in.
Thank you.
I think statewide, that's making it a more regular policy. Extremely important.
Okay, thank you all. We will move down to consent agenda.
Don't have anything unique, no gifts to the district or surplus property. It's standard claims. Didn't get any questions on that in the minutes.
How do we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second?
We have a motion to present the, or sorry, to approve that the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposing, say aye. Motion carries five zero. Keep counting and like, do I have some right number? Okay. No, Mr. Teeger? Oh, yep, budget update.
I don't have much for budget update. Obviously in July, these are all estimates. Expenditures are very minimal. The budget numbers on the far left-hand side are all estimates. Those are basically what come from my budget. Those are all inflated numbers. So I give you a report because I want you to have something to date. In other words, what we have today, as of today, this is correct, but it doesn't carry a lot of meaning because it's based off of budgeted estimates and expenditures after one month, which are very minimal. So do what you want with it, but I present it to you, doesn't carry a lot of meaning.
Move down to old business, budget for publication, 2026 budget.
We've gotten to the point now where we need to approve a budget for publication in preparation for our hearing. That will be right before the September meeting. Click on the first link there. That is what would go to the newspaper, that's the code 99. If you would maybe just look at the far right-hand column, the estimated tax rate. If you go down there through each fund, that will give you an idea of what we're planning on levying for those funds. The general fund, again, on the far, as you look at the far right-hand column where it says estimated tax rate with an asterisk there, it's column seven. The general fund will have 20 mils, which is statutory. And right next to that to the left, we're gonna be levying $606,914. Supplemental general would be 12.682 mils for a total of $499,162. Go down a couple of lines, you get capital outlay, eight mils, which is the max, $314,169. And then if you compare those three, which are the three levying funds we had last year as well, to compare apples to apples, you kind of go back to the previous year, which is to the left of that. The very top, where we were looking at, it says 2025, 2026 proposed budget. If you go back to 24, 25 actual, and you see what we levied in actual dollars, I'm sorry, actual expenditures. You look at the actual tax rate. If you notice, our tax rate went down significantly, particularly in P L B. So we weren't going to exceed R and R until we added bond interest. And that obviously is a completely new levy and that puts us way over. So if, if anyone asks you, why are we over? When you compare the three levying funds from last year to the three levying funds this year, we're actually down significantly, both in dollars taxed and mils assessed. But when you add in the bond issue, obviously that's 19.5 mils, another, you know, 763,000 puts us way over. Which leads us to the next notice, which is the notice of R and R hearing, because we are exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And the only reason we're exceeding it is because of the bond issue. We are also going to publish this as well and again, in, in time so that everyone has a chance to see it in the paper, do it on the website and then, you know, people are free to attend the hearing. So I feel, if you remember correctly, I budget relatively high, so we don't have to republish later in the year. We will not expend all of these monies. We also do levy the three mils for the rent commission. They, we are, they don't have authority to levy tax and collect it. So they use our, our boundary, our taxable property and then we're kind of a flow-through entity. We collect it from the county, goes to the county, county sends it to us, we collect it for them and we send it off to them. Again, I budget high to make sure we could have the authority to expend under whatever circumstance could befall the district. And I feel like it's a good budget. We did that K S D look at it and they feel like it's good. You guys know my history with this. I watch this very carefully, I mean it just personally. I feel very good with where we're at. It's nice to be able to lower the levy in some of the other areas so that, you know, they don't feel the full force of 19.387 mils. If you remember correctly, we advertised the bond issue as 19.5 mils, so I'm budgeting a little bit less than that. Now whether or not we levy that, I mean, obviously it comes down to get the actual valuation, but that does give us a little wiggle of an up or then the actual number's gonna be, should be right there, maybe a little less. Other than that, if you guys approve this, this is what will go to the newspaper and then we will have our hearing during the September meeting. What questions can you guys have?
I think that looks good.
What were the numbers behind the pretty big drop in the R and R?
We had some additional carryover cash and we modified our collection rate a little bit. We collected less at this time this year than we did last year, which leads me to believe, again, I'm not gonna say the R word, but traditionally we've always collected 90% of taxes in the budget season. We collected, I think it was this year about, was it 80%? I think right at 80%. Not a lot, but it means that people are delaying paying their taxes. We had a 90% for a long, long time. I mean, almost like clockwork, 91.3, 91.5, 90.8 and it went down. So that made, and so that meant we had more taxing process, we had more coming to us. And we did have a relatively significant carryover cash balance, so that's what lowered it. We're gonna try to get it to our dozen balance around because next year if it ever go back up, then obviously you're going through the R and R circus. But we're gonna try to see that a little, a little bit. But I will say it is nice, at least for this year, as we introduced the 19.387 mils. Overall, that should help kind of buffer that a little bit. And of course, we get a significant amount of state aid in general, in supplemental general recap, out of those three levying funds. We get a lot of state aid. We don't get any bond interest.
So really our state aid and P L B didn't really change? You're just saying?
Not much. That, yeah, that was more just carryover cash and collection rates. We had more taxing process and more money special forward.
And if, I understand what you mean by taxes and process. We're basically gonna have money flowing into this fiscal year that was really the previous tax, calendar tax year?
Yeah, we have more coming than we previously used to have.
So probably will some, right?
Could theoretically. I, I will say, I don't know. I mean, at some point, the R word's gonna come into play. I mean, I, again, looking at the, the finance world and all that, I mean, I think the consumers tab. At some point, I think you're going to see at least some sort of small recession come forth. And once that happens, I think that's where all sorts of things happen. You know, the order in which people pay things, like I said, in Martin County was always 9%. And for us anyway, for, for our boundaries. So for whatever reason, those same group of people that own property didn't pay, obviously it depends on what you're looking at, only paid 80%. So we have another 10% coming that normally wouldn't. And I feel like that is due to the fact that some consumers are trying to re-prioritize a little bit and, you know, trying to re-figure their valuable dollars. Where are they going to? What payments are they going to?
Was there a delay though, last year in parking tax statements going out?
I'm not sure. I don't know.
Well, I know it's almost the norm, but maybe, maybe it didn't make any difference, but I just seem to remember that there was.
Yeah, there could have been. If you did notice, our valuations stayed very similar, so didn't have a lot of geration there.
It was just nice to see, this is what, at least what I expected to see, hoped to see, that we were gonna have to increase it because of the bond and not because of anything else.
Sure. And that's where, like I said, if there was one benefit to this, it was nice that it does cushion some. I love it because if they all three, if they all three stayed the same, then you're truly increasing by 19.387 mils. And overall, reckon not, we're increasing whatever that difference is, but, you know, reduce it about, it's about nine mils, I guess. What, 50.6? So if you go to the bottom there where it says total U S D expenditures and you go across there, there's two lines there. The mill levy last year was 50.646 and here it's 60.069. Which if you remember correctly, when we had an old bond and interest levy, it was always right at about 60 to 62. So we're kind of back to where we were in it. So it's not, at least we're not at levels that are unprecedented in, in the district. John, did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on that? We will talk, I am gonna give a budget presentation at some point. We're gonna have to potentially talk about capital outlay, maybe becoming more operational in nature to try to accommodate some of our expenditures as we maybe transition into a new reality. At this point, capital outlay has been mostly allowed to build up, repay for capital projects down. I think this is an uncommon in some districts that might be struggling budget-wise. Do they begin to shift some operations, I think we, you can do this, to capital outlay and then that eight mils is no longer really discretion and it almost becomes part of, almost like an extension of the R and R. You do get state aid on that, so you do want to try to leverage that. But some things to think about. Ultimately though, this is from the notice, goes off to the paper. We published it on the website and then this serves as a max. If you guys, when you eventually approve our budget, if you wanna go lower than that, if you really can, this serves as a ceiling. Can't go higher, you can't go lower, you can go at that or down. Any other questions? If not, I would ask, yeah, any other motion to approve the budget for publication as presented?
I move we approve the 25, 2026 budget for publication as presented.
We have a motion to approve the 25, 26 budget for publication as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Motion carries five zero.
Please understand, you didn't approve a budget, you approved it for publication and then you guys will tell me, say, which one budget?
Bond project update.
Before I get to that, since we don't have an executive session planned, we do have snacks and drinks in there. If you guys want to, you know, snag a drink or a snack, I'm gonna spend a little bit of time talking about the bond project. So maybe if, as I'm discussing, if you guys want to go in there, grab yourself a drink, grab yourself some snacks, feel free to do so. I, I certainly don't defend it. Bond project update. As some people have mentioned already, obviously, bond projects are going. I did send you guys some photos, hopefully you guys had a chance to look at those. Roof is done at the grade school, to the best of my knowledge. I think things are good. I, Sheri, I think you did talk to Mike a little bit about some things and we're thinking maybe it's painting issues. So, you know, we're gonna look at that. But I think everything is good down there on the roof. They are now working on the roof up here and obviously with the rain we've had there, they're probably getting tested a little bit. But to the best of my knowledge and visiting with the architect, I think that project is going as planned. Window project has, has been delayed a little bit and it's a little slower. I will say at this point, I'm not sure, you know, what to do. I mean, it's just, we gotta grind it out to the best we can. We are gonna communicate with parents. I'm gonna put something out on social media, put it through Messenger or Power Hub. Try to get messages out to families to kind of let them know, you know, here's what to expect, here's what we're doing. We're doing the best we can on it. It is, it is what it is at this point. We do have, I think in that entirety of the south wing, we do have all the frames in. Glass still isn't in yet, so once they get the glass, they're gonna put that in and we're gonna try to get that done. I think they said, remind me guys, or Joel, I think you read that. I think they said, it's supposed to come in, is it the 19th?
The 22nd.
The 27th, the next one, okay.
The 22nd and install starting on the 25th.
25th, okay. So it's gonna be that first week of, first full week of school when they're going to do that. Once the glass comes in, they're gonna try to get that up. I think they're, we've got kind of a planned schedule where while they're in the classroom, we're gonna pull the kids out of the classroom so they can put the glass in. And then I think we're gonna try to get the Eagles, because the Eagles room won't be used in the first week. So we use that and then we use that as the flex room to where we shift people to as their classroom gets done, put it back in. The hallways to the outside, that's not as much a concern to us, that's not as much of a disruption. So they'll try to do that when they can. And then we're gonna try to get that south wing done its entirety. And then the very least, our tile room kindergarten and first grade would be done, they don't have to worry about it. And then you're dealing with some older kids, which at least should mitigate some of the disruption. So looking at that, we did have our progress meeting today. They did talk a little bit about, you know, end dates. I think they, first vendor thought it was maybe December or how it kind of looked and said, no, that, that's not right. It's end of October. And then he did, he did acknowledge he wasn't sure, he was just going off of memory and the, the architect was quick to jump in and said, no, I think we're looking at end of October. They did say that once they get the, once they get the glass in, as they install the frames, they're just gonna put the glass in right away, so we won't have the issue with plywood. It's pretty much as the frames go in, glass will go in as well. We are gonna start on the HVAC project, bidding that out, because that is the project for next summer. There's some lead time on the equipment there. And then also too, we're gonna start working on plans for the entrance area of the grade school, new office door. We have to walk in through there. That's a smaller part of the project, but will require some planning because that's only the true, the new construction we have.
Can we go back to the windows for just a second?
Yeah, please.
So as we talked about when we were looking at approving the bids, there was a lot of discussion about what it was gonna look like once they got in there and looked at the structure of the window frame itself and if they had to replace all that, it was gonna, have we run into any issues whatsoever?
Yeah, that's a really good question, because I asked, I said, that concern that we had on a per window basis, have they found any that? And she said, no.
Okay.
So there's been a couple of minor things that they've addressed, but that concern of having to remake those openings has not been, no rock or anything. They found a little bit of rocks in places, but no major rock, no significant additional cost.
Perfect.
As of now. They still have two wings that they have to dig into, but I think they felt like, once they opened one or two, they have an idea. They feel pretty good about that.
Good.
Good question.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that? Like you guys can kind of see the progress. If you guys have any questions, let me know. I'll try to take photos as it gets updated. It's weird because you, I guess I'll tell you guys the lead. I don't know what, to what degree we promote this. I mean, there's not a lot of sexy work going on here. I mean, do you like, here's our new roof and put it out on our Facebook page and yay, you know? It's a good thing. I don't know if it's something that necessarily is something you, you promote, maybe it is, I don't know. You know, like the windows, the windows are nice, I get that. And once they get done, maybe HVAC, you know, here's our new, you know, heat, you know? I don't know, obviously I want to make sure that people are aware of what's going on, but I don't know to the degree that you promote that stuff because it's kind of just, you know, part and parcel of the cooperation thoughts.
I think it'd be good to, when we have things done, you know, just in general, I don't think most people can tell you, yeah, the HVAC is gonna start on this date, windows are gonna be done on this day. They just know it's kind of going on. So I'd say at least when we get down, when all the roofs are done, we should say, yeah, all the roofs are done and the ones are done. You know, just that much of it.
Yeah, I, I'd like to know your guys' idea on that.
Almost kind of like a progress report, like this is what we laid out, this is what we completed, this is what's coming next, something kind of.
Yeah, I don't know about pictures, but I agree, just kind of a checklist almost. And it would be nice to say it, here's what the grade school looked before windows and here's what it looks like now. I think that might be just before and after the.
Because I, again, I want to keep the, the public appropriately apprised of progress, but also the two, some of that stuff just typically when people are promoting, it's like the new building, here's the new basketball court we have, or here's the new high school that we're building, here's the progress. And they've got, sometimes for big ones, they've got like a camera at the construction site and you can see it progress. I don't know if roofs and HVAC and all that are sexy enough to do that, so. But like I said, it's a balance because you wanna make sure that people know that we're making progress, here's where we're at.
One thing on HVAC and the meeting and the planning, I have an interest in what the plans will be rather than finding out what they are after the bid comes back. I mean, in other words, I want to listen to the bid package and particularly an ocean supplemental heater or not.
So maybe specs then, is that what you're wanting to know?
Yeah, you know, because, and the kind of units that we're using, you know, the heat pump kind of units and are we gonna, are we not gonna have some supplemental heat? Are we gonna have possibilities of coldest day of the winter problems, just new stuff that we had in the past?
Yeah. I will say too, again, I went up to the grade school. I will say too, again, I went up to the grade school the other, the other day, and chilled like a villain. I mean, for what, I mean, I do not know what it is. It's, the system works phenomenally well when it's 100 degrees out, kicks out cool air, like, I mean, it, it's amazing. Anywhere from probably 20 degrees to 80 degrees, very temperate, it's fine. It, it struggles, and this is where I think the windows and doors will help. It struggles when it gets to that zero-degree range, and it shuts down and mechanical stuff, so. Because I've been watching that as well, like, I'm fascinated with the fact that it seems like when it's really cold out, that's where it really struggles. But when it's really hot out, air conditioning, I mean, it was, I put my hand there, and it was as cold as I felt. So, yeah, but your point is well taken. I'll, what I might do is let the architect know, let, maybe just in layperson's terms, what are you looking at for specs? What are you going to have bid out, so I can share with my board before we actually have the bids come in, so you guys maybe even have some influence on what that looks like? Is that kind of what you're getting at?
Yeah. And, you know, I don't want to have a, and I don't have direct knowledge of all the specs that were in the grade school building, but I don't want to have some clause come out of these HVACs and says, this will work unless it's 7 degrees outside now, or working.
Okay. We have to be ready to spend some more money then.
Well, I mean, you know, well, I'm saying, I don't know, I want to know what we're getting.
Sure.
And money's, I know we're limited with money, but I don't have any supply.
Yep, I understand. Any other questions? I'll keep you posted. I will say, if you guys ever want a tour, or you want to, you know, peer behind the curtain a little bit, reach out to me. I'll be more than happy to take you guys up. To the best of my knowledge, we don't have to wear hard hats. Maybe that might change, but I can maybe walk you through whatever progress we have for time. If we go up to the roof, you might have to do that yourself. I'm not a big, big fan of that, but I, that's the one thing I may not be able to take photos of, unless it's from the ground and up here, that's kind of difficult to do. So, I may have to maybe have Mike take the photos, and I can send to you that, so.
You have said here, last week during those 105-degree days, that roofing crew was up there, and they have all their safety equipment on hold. It was just, wow.
They've done a really good job. I've been very impressed.
Could we go with you?
Diamond of Dodge.
Is that Tyler?
That is, yes.
Yes, Tyler. One of my very favorite people.
Yeah. My former students.
Yep.
Yeah, to your point, Steve.
I was impressed.
I haven't thought maybe they shut down operations. It got crazy hot to the point where I'm like, is that a safety issue?
I think.
Yeah. And nope, they, they were out there grinding it out.
And with all the gear on, these guys had regular shirts on, work shirts, and a vest on, and a helmet.
Yep.
It's awesome to know that they have a safety crew also.
Yep. Which tells you they have a disciplined, professional crew.
Yeah. And they just have the structure of how they do things. Yeah. No, I agree completely. That's all I have in the president on that topic.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to 9B. We have board member resignation.
Okay. Hopefully, you guys had a chance to look at Don's resignation letter. As much as you guys know, he's stepping down because his family's moving to a different locale. This then triggers some protocols for the board. You guys have to approve a board vacancy resolution, which I've included there. That board vacancy resolution, if passed, then authorizes the board clerk, which is Brian, to send the board vacancy notice, which I've also included here, to the newspaper. And ultimately, you guys have a great deal of discretion on how you handle this, other than the fact that you can't fill by appointment the vacancy any sooner than 15 days following the publication notice. So, 15 days have to lapse after the publication of the notice in order to fill. That gives everyone plenty of time to, I guess, think if they want to do it, and then come. The process has always been very informal here. You guys can do however you want. Traditionally, what we do is we put out a notice saying, if anyone's interested, contact the central office. I'd have to look and see, I think sometimes I actually maybe have someone just fill out something, you know, very briefly, just to let you guys know, document a source that this is who's interested. And then, we turn those names over to you, and you guys decide what you want to do with them. The only thing you cannot do is you cannot go into executive session to discuss that, because that is elected personnel, not non-elected personnel, these aren't employees. We've done this a couple of times in my tenure. I think the board has done it well in the past. Traditionally, they have whoever's interested come, and then whoever's interested, we communicate, say, please have an exploratory meeting. And then, they just come up and give a little speech as to why they want to be on the board. And then, you guys can decide what to do. You can either appoint, you can table. And there is no timeframe that requires you to do this. And there have been some boards that have really gone to some phony situations where you had split boards, it was 3-3, and they can never get approval if one group liked one candidate, the other group didn't, and vice versa. And I think there was one extreme case in my name in the district where I think even the governor had to step in and really try to encourage some movement on that, because it took so long to fill that spot in a deadlock. You guys can Google it if you want to find out the district. But you guys aren't under, and technically, if I understand correctly, Don truly isn't off the board until you guys actually appoint a replacement. So, theoretically, if we needed him to come back to vote on something, let's say some outward hair, you could, I don't think he's going to. But just to kind of give you an idea of the legal ease of it, his tenure truly doesn't end until you guys make an appointment. But, and then, appointment is just through majority vote.
And it says for the remaining time of his term?
Yes, it's for the remainder, the unexpired term of the next election. We just missed this election. For the next election, that would be for the four years. So, it would be for the remainder, the, yeah, unexpired, remainder of that period, and then they would have an election for that, one like they would, even if it was here. So, you guys need to pass the resolution, so he can then send a notice to the paper. And then, ultimately, it's in your guys' hands. Do you guys just want the central office to collect the names of people that are interested, and then get those to you guys? Is that kind of what?
I think that would be the best.
Okay.
That way, it's evenly dispersed.
Okay.
Everybody's got the same information.
And this, this is something we would probably put out through all sorts of media. I know we've had that question before. This would be something that would be appropriate for social media, and for everything else to kind of maximize the reach. And then, go from there.
Is our intent, as a board, then, are we going to be ready to start looking at this next month? Is that our?
Do you want to do it in September?
Good.
Sure.
I think that's one of the times.
Perfect. I will make sure we get that out, and get going on that. If you know of anyone who is interested, send them to the central office. I'm going to communicate with Ashley. Show up a list of protocols, and we'll get that ready going. As those names come in, I might let you guys know who's, who's in the pool. Do need some action in the office to authorize it to send the paper.
I move we accept Don Anderson's resignation from the USD 355 Board of Education effective immediately as presented with gratitude.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to accept Don Anderson's resignation from the USD 355 Board of Education effective immediately as presented with gratitude. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. We have another motion there.
I move we approve resolution 8-25-1, board vacancy resolution as presented.
Okay. We have a motion to approve resolution 8-25-1, board vacancy resolution as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And we have no executive session.
That's all I have, that's all.
We are.
You guys.
Less than an hour, that was less than an hour.
What a president.
It's almost like.